Okay. Well, good afternoon or good morning, I should say. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to, I guess it'll be afternoon at some time. But good morning, everyone. Welcome to Gray County Council for September 10th, 2020. Looking out the warden's window here, it's looking like a very gray day for Gray County and but sunshine is in store. So there you go. Um, I'll, Madam Clerk, going to you with regards to roll call.
We have all members of council present, Mr. Warden.
Well, good morning and welcome again, County Council. We do have an agenda for our council portion of today's meeting. Is there any decoration of interest with the councilors? Okay, I hear none. If one does arise, you can declare it at that time. I have that move by Counselor Hutchison and second by Counselor Mackey that the Gray County Council and Committee of the Whole dated August 13th, we put on the floor. Is there, are there any issues or any errors or omissions with regards to those minutes? All right, hearing none. Is anybody opposed to those minutes? Hearing none, those are carried. Okay, then moving forward then with our Board of Health, I have moved by Counselor Patterson and second by Counselor O'Leary with regards to the Board of Minutes, and I understand that Dr. Era is going to be in today to speak to those minutes and welcome, Dr. Era.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, Council. The minutes, the two main highlights from the minutes of the last board meetings are as follow. One is related to the funding announcement we received, announcement for the 2020 calendar year from the Ministry of Health. Important notes for funding agreement that we have zero increase to the county portion of funding for 2020 and for 2021. The ministry has provided mitigation funding for these two years to offset the recent 70%, 30% funding split. Our funding is no longer segregated by program, which provide flexibility in utilizing the fund to address the local need during the emergency if there are certain programs that require more funding than others. Additionally, we have received an announcement that we will have funding for nine nursing staff, public health nurses in schools. It was six at the time of the writing the minutes, then there was announcement to add three addition to the, to the team. And we have actually started recruitment before the announcement based on projected need. So that, that six of the nurses were hired by the time of the minutes and currently we have all nine included in a team. And recruitment for new staff would continue. The second update, Mr. Chair, is related to school safe reopening and the efforts from public health, from school officials, from the parents and different stakeholders around the table. I feel confident we have invested sufficient amount of effort and safe reopening plans. There is communication with different stakeholders and we will continue to monitor the situation, whether it's the epidemiology or the compliance and the collaboration among partners. I feel confident we are positioned, we have positioned our schools for safe reopening.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Era?
Those are the two main highlights. There, that could be the issue of working with the two counties to draft potential bylaw to address mandating masks. However, you know, the staff in the county can provide more detailed progress on this issue.
Okay, well, thank you for those updates. Any question, questions from County Council to Dr. Era?
I have Counselor Desai.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Desai. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Warden. My question is to Dr. Era with regards to, he mentioned the safe reopening of schools. And I understand that from a, from a policy perspective or from a, from an operational perspective, we can do a lot, we can do everything we can in order to ensure that the, the return to school is safe. At the same time, kids do have a mind of their own and, and at times, certain rules might just, you know, not apply anymore because, well, for, for one, the other kid had a Superman mask, which was better than my Spider-Man mask, so I wanted to trade. So in the event that there is a, an uptick of cases, are we prepared to sort of go back in phases to, I mean, we're phase three provincially now, but would the health unit be willing to sort of say, okay, well, we're going to go back to phase two restrictions instead of staying at phase three restrictions?
Dr. Era?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have invested every ounce of energy to ensure we, we did our best to position the schools for successful reopening. However, I agree with your, with your question or the gist of, of the question that we have to be very conservative when it comes to the health of children, what comes to the health of the, the community at, at large. Any outbreak in a school would spill out into the community and vice versa. And there, there is so much redundancy in, and redundancy is a positive term in, in the safety plans. If the situation progresses to seeing more cases, possibly clusters, possibly outbreaks, we will adjust our approach accordingly. And if, if the group recalls, there were three different plans for reopening schools. One of them is complete return with the measures in place like we are right now, the second one on the other side of the spectrum, complete closure of schools and remote learning and a modified approach in the middle, which would entail 50% of class at alternate times. We would definitely monitor and continue to evaluate. I don't see a complete shutdown of the community or of the society similar to March and April. We have enough evidence and it's accumulated from different jurisdictions and countries that if we implement five measures, it will be sufficient to control the outbreak, the five measures, just for complete, be complete are watching our distance, washing our hands, wearing mask in crowded, in indoor environment, avoiding crowds and trying to use the outdoors more than the indoors whenever is possible. So all in all, yes, the, we would have to be conservative and use any measure to ensure safety.
Okay, thank you. Any follow up there, Counselor Cash, Desai?
No, no further questions, Ms. Warden. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions to Dr. Era? Okay, Counselor Patterson, do you have anything to add as the Vice Chair of the Health Unit?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would like to add that Dr. Era is also looking after us with the resiliency training that's coming up. So just a reminder, that's on September 15th. There's two half-day sessions, like half, one session in the morning, one in the afternoon. This is training similar to what the first responders receive and recognizing that there's additional pressure on all of us, all our leaders as a result of this pandemic and stress management to assist us in serving our communities. So if you haven't registered, please do so. I think it'll be well worthwhile. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Counselor Patterson, for bringing that up. And I know I'm, I'm signed up for that and certainly encourage others to do the same. I think Counselor.
Yes, Counselor Potter and Counselor Gamble.
Okay, thank you. Potter, and thanks, too.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, Doctor, at the last session you had, we talked a little bit about Christmas celebrations and outdoor community celebrations. And that has come up to me at the meeting of one of our business associations. So do you have any advice yet regarding, we don't really have a parade. We have a gathering more, more than a parade. So I wondered if you have any advice yet or any idea when, when you might have a better understanding of what controls should be put in place?
Thank you for the question, Dr. Era.
And thank you for bringing this issue up. We have a list of events coming up. One of them is Halloween, the other is the Christmas holidays. I'm gonna just go wide and focus on the question. And we have been, our team has been preparing communication related to each one. It is, it is a better practice actually to wait until two, three weeks before the event because the epidemiology can change within weeks and it will be futile exercise to try to predict the different scenarios that could happen around that time. Specifically for the holidays, Christmas and New Years, these events are very important for the well-being of families and individuals. And no question, we would do our best to see how we can have a safe celebration of these events. Again, it's, it's far in the future relatively at this point to predict what that would happen. However, if I want to take an educated guess, I would say celebration outdoors would be quite feasible, quite manageable risk-wise. Indoors, family bubbles would be the best approach. However, we will have to see until we get closer to that point to make definitive recommendation on them.
Certainly celebrate Christmas outside with a Christmas tree and presents and okay, thank you for that.
A little cold.
Yeah, Counselor Gamble, you, you had a question?
Yes, I've noticed the last week in online, there's been a couple of letters posted of, from lawyers who are saying that it's not mandatory to wear a mask. I'm just curious, how, how strong is that law? If you took a notion to make it mandatory, I'm curious about what's going on.
Thank you for that, Dr. Era.
So the, the orders, the bylaws and the letter of instructions that have been used in Ontario have been vetted by the legal council for each municipality or health unit accordingly. And there are a list of exemptions that are very wide in nature to address any health need or disability. And all in all, my understanding, and I'm not a legal expert in any way, my understanding from our legal that having the exemptions in place would allow many people to be comfortable saying no. And the order itself in Graham Bruce has the best effort concept to it. That is to say, nobody will be escorted out of a business or refused entry based on the order, rather the best effort of reminder. The, these legal vehicles, whether order or bylaw, have been in nature educational, raising the awareness of the importance of the intervention. So I haven't heard of any situation where it went to a tribunal for a human right. And my understanding again, and I'm not a legal expert in any way, that the complaint for human rights has to be associated with something related to the Human Rights Code, whether it's disability or something else, just the mere fact that somebody doesn't wear a mask, want to wear a mask is, does not qualify as a human right. That's directly from our legal. However, I'm, I would, for anybody who's questioning the, the requirement or the potential of legal action based on these bylaws or orders, legal counsel is definitely warranted.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, that's, I mean, there's always somebody could challenge it, but I mean, that's what makes lawyers, I guess, have a job. Is there, are there any other questions, Madam Clerk? Is there anybody else who wants to speak there?
No.
And again, as we move through this and certainly with the school, schools back in, in order, that's going to be an interesting time as we move through this. And I know there's a little bit of anxiety out there, but Dr. Era, I know you wrote a good letter there a few weeks back with regards to the going back to school. And I think that was very comforting for, for a lot in the sense of what you put together there for sure. And thank you for that. Seeing there's no other questions, again, the, the minutes were moved and second, are there anybody opposed to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, that's carried. Moving on in, onto our agenda, item six, bylaws. Bylaw 5091-20 was moved by Counselor Keveney and second by Counselor Millen. And is there any, any questions to that bylaw? Okay, hearing none. Anybody opposed to that bylaw? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay, moving on to good news and celebrations. This is always a highlight of our County Council. I'm going to start off with Mayor of Chatsworth, Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Good news. Well, September Labor Day weekend is over, so traveling on Highway 6 and 10 should be a little more safer and back to some normalcy with the, the traffic volumes. It's been horrendous, you know, for the, the summer for local travel on 6 and 10. Chatsworth Council will be having their first in-person meeting on October 7th. Our plan is to stage that at the fire hall to, to allow for a larger number of participants. So we're going to try to do that through the, the next three months and you'll see how things go that way, but we can certainly separate ourselves, you know, at the fire hall and have a larger number of, of participants. I think we're going to, it's going to be a sign up for people that want to attend in person so that we can monitor and it'll be on a first come, first served basis. And I think the maximum number of people that we can socially accommodate will be around 50. Now typically, we don't have that many attending council anyways, but so that's our plan for that return. Township office is open and it's by appointment only, but people can come to the door if they're wanting to pay a bill and the staff will let them in. So that seems to be working well and I think that's the primary updates. Thanks, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey and Counselor Gamble. Do you have anything to add for Chatsworth?
Yes, I, I think, Doctor, Scott has said, Merrick Mackey has said that everything that's coming up. There's one thing is the Chatsworth Lake Society is doing a gate, roadside gate demonstration display, I guess. And it's a competition and we as a council have decided that we should be part of it. So if you're driving by the council office, you'll see part of it there. We're not quite complete yet, but hopefully we will be. So that's, that's my part.
Okay, well, thank you for that. All right, and moving on then, Georgian Bluffs, Mayor Burley, do you have any updates?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everybody. Us in Georgian Bluffs are still living a dream. We look forward to our next challenge, which we have a few, which we're trying to resolve. Our council chambers, it's been open. We've had our meeting Wednesday night, a committee of whole. It's just totally amazing. We had our public meeting by video. We had over 15 participants and no problems at all. It was just amazing how great the staff had put this all together and confidence to our staff. They just done an excellent job. Our facilities are going to be opening next week under a strict protocol and so on, which is great. We look forward to the rain so we can all get out there, get fresh air, cutting our grass. Other than that, we're still living the dream.
And Counselor Burley, do you want to speak anything about the regional airport meeting that we had last week?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. It was a, it was amazing thing to be set up again. We did have our Charlie arena, social distance and so on. I think it went very well. We had a great conversation with all the key players and I really look forward to having that, these conversations with County Council as a whole, so we can really get into it and to see how we can all work together to make this facility work for the whole region.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Counselor Carlton, do you have anything to add for Georgian Bluffs?
No, nothing to add. Other than staff are working this week getting ice in at at Shallow Lake Community Center, so that'll be ready to go shortly. And yes, it was an excellent meeting about the airport. I was glad to see so many in attendance at that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Sorry. Sorry, I have Counselor Body who has his hand up, so I'm not sure if he has a question. Good.
Counselor Body.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I can wait till my turn there, Paul.
Sorry?
He's gonna wait.
Oh, you're gonna wait. Okay.
Table, I'll wait for my turn.
You just jumped again there a little bit. Okay, that's fine. So excited. You're so excited, right? All right, well, why not, why don't I go to Own Sound right now and get the highlights from Mayor Body? How's that?
You can, Paul, but you're, you're going around the table. So I was just, I can wait till you go around the table.
No, no, it's okay. You go ahead. I can mix it up a bit.
Okay. I just want to assure the good news that Counselor Gamble and I were out last week to Lee Manor. Brian's cousin Louise Gamble had been at a school in Taiwan called the Tam King Private School. Those kids at that school wanted to help Canada with face masks and together they collected 16,000 face masks to be sent through here to Own Sound to be shared with our long-term care workers in Gray County at our three homes. And it was really wonderful to meet with Louise in front of, in front of Lee Manor. Also with Jennifer Cornell and Stacy Goldie from our facilities were there. So, you know, we've, as we run into these issues, these big social issues, we've had great support from people within the community, great businesses. Certainly Bruce Power has provided a lot of mass and help. You realize how big your community is when kids at schools in Taiwan are willing to help us here in Own Sound and, and share some of the load and, and provide us with mass. So kudos to Brian's cousin Louise and everybody involved for helping us out and sharing and making our world a little bit smaller. So that's my only point. Everything's going well up the city for now. We hope we keep coming up with these zero new cases through Graham Bruce and let the rest of the world tip when we apparently have a, an upswing in cases in the fall, but that's all for now. Thanks, Paul.
No problem, Counselor Body. And maybe you can forward the information and maybe get Penny to draft a letter from the Warden's Office also thanking that school.
Okay, will do.
Okay, all right. Counselor O'Leary, do you have anything to add to Own Sound's great news?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Warden. Just a quick update on the 10th Street Bridge. All of the rebar is in place and has been inspected, ready for a 12-hour continuous pour on Tuesday morning. And on that, after that pour, that puts the bridge on schedule to open in December of 2020. So that's good news. Thank you.
Maybe we'll have to have a Christmas party on that bridge, Counselor O'Leary.
So, sorry, it's a small Christmas outdoor gathering.
Right, corrected there. I still didn't get a comment from Counselor O'Leary, but very good. Okay, I'm going to go back to, thank you for that. I'm gonna go to Hanover at this time and Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a brief update. It's always sunny in Hanover. And we are cautiously and slowly opening our civic center offices and our aquatic center. So that's what's on next steps for us. And that's it. It's sunny. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Counselor Patterson and Deputy Warden Hicks. Do you have anything to add to about Hanover?
Not much to add in terms of Hanover, but once again, I want to give huge kudos to the municipality of Meaford. I thought it was a one-off when I went to their memorial park, so I thought I would try it a second time. And it is an absolute gem. I stayed in a different section of the, of the park this time and equal service, just a great, great place to, to visit. Thank you, guys.
Did you get the key to Meaford there, Deputy Warden?
No, but I'm lobbying for it. Can you, can you tell two meetings in a row?
We'll work on that. We'll see what we can get, come up with Counselor Columbus for sure. Okay, well, thank you. And next, we will, we will go to Meaford and Counselor Complis for rebuttal there.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks again to Counselor Hicks for the superb promotion of our memorial park. We are very proud of it. And it has changed its complexion a little bit this year for sure. We've got our shoreline rocked up and it's, it's safe there now. There's been a lot of activity there over the summer and it's, it is coming along. As is other construction, our library is progressing nicely with windows in and, and the siding up looking like the inners are, are going to be in place very soon. Trobridge Bridge is well in hand as well. And this, I don't know if anyone knew that what we've done now is put a, another sidewalk on the, what is it, the north side, I guess, the lakeside of Trobridge. We only had the one sidewalk, but having this extension and it's cantilevered off the, off the bridge. So that'll be a nice addition for anyone leaving from the harbor and walking uptown. We're going to be holding our first in-person council meeting on Monday and it will be at Meaford Hall with all due precautions. They will be live streamed and filmed as well by, by Rogers. Protocols are in place to allow the public to participate with pre-registration for delegations and presentations as well as questions. So that will be happening on Monday. We're anxious to see how that's all going to work out. We've got, certainly got the space in Meaford Hall. Speaking of Meaford Hall, sadly, over the long weekend, MIF was missed this year for the first time in its history. But the good news is that they are going to return virtually over the Thanksgiving weekend with films that will be, you can purchase tickets for and you'll get the key to access that film and complete with dinners for in-town patrons. So that will be a different experience for us all. Other than that, we are, we've started films at the Thursday Flix, Meaford Hall on Thursday the 17th, I believe it is. And again, they are pre-registered, pre-purchased tickets and the patrons will be limited to about 50 people to start till we see how that goes. So things are beginning to happen with Meaford Hall and we're all excited about that. We are looking forward to the County EMC meeting discussion on the 17th with regard to the termination of the emergency status, but we are holding the line and complying with, with everyone else closing at the same time throughout Gray County. And I think that's it for me at this point. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Columbus, Mayor Columbus. And what about the scarecrows? What's happening there?
Oh, unfortunately, the scarecrows, they had declared in early on the year that this would not happen this year. That will be missed as well. We've had our major public attractions, of course, MIF and the scarecrow invasion. However, don't be surprised if you see the households that have scarecrows pop up in unusual places as you go through on your way elsewhere, perhaps are stopping to have a look. There are some individuals who are mounting their own displays and, but officially, the scarecrow parade and activities, family festival day will not happen this year. And they're in preparation for a major display next year. It being another banner year for them, record year. So wait till next year.
Okay, Counselor Columbus, and we'll look for a scarecrow on that big red chair though. Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. And just a couple of events to add to Mayor Columbus's discussion of what's happening in Meaford these days. Every year, our Meaford Hospital Foundation operates a 5K run. Every year, our Meford Hospital Foundation operates a five-k run walk. This year, that event has gone virtual, which means that people can do the five-k any way they wish, whether it's in a kayak or on a bike or rollerblading or any way that they would like to, to entertain that activity. And it is a fundraising event for our hospital. And people can just go online to the Meford Hospital Foundation site and, and register and get pledges. And there's prizes and awards available for that event as well. And also, our Meford Chamber of Commerce every year hosts Meford Dragons. And to date, this event has been the largest economic driver of business in Meford and fifty-five businesses at least have been kick-started this year. There is still an opportunity for anyone who is entertaining the idea of a new business or expanding their current business to register for the event. And there's support for people to help with their business plans and so on. The registrations are due by September fifteenth. The contestants then will be selected and they will make their pitches at Woodford Hall on the thirtieth of September. And in December, the video of that event will be available to the public and the winners will be announced. So it is a very exciting event for Meford and we're looking forward to it. And I congratulate the Chamber of Commerce for moving forward and making this happen this year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Kivany. And I, again, I know if I mentioned this before, it's sad to see that the Meford Outlet Facility is, I guess, at the last stages of, I think, an online auction. And I understand that they're retiring, so a little bit of a hole there in Meford that I'm sure you guys will figure out how to, how to fill.
Well, we certainly hope. Well, that's a building of a hundred thousand square feet, which brought a lot of traffic into Meford. And yes, we're going to miss it. We've lost a number of businesses these past few months and it certainly is something that our recovery task force is aware of and, and, and working on. So yes, there are some retail spaces available in Meford if anyone's interested.
Yeah, that was a, you go there and they just about had everything. Okay, well, thank you for that. And we'll move on to Southgate. Counselor Woodbury, Mayor Woodbury, welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. In Southgate, everything is sunny and bright. I actually got higher watt light bulbs because I don't seem to get out of the office in here looking at the computer too much. So that's how I got more sun. There's, like everyone else, a lot of the events for this fall are kind of up in the air and I think everybody's just taking a breath after the end of summer and Labor Day and seeing how things are going. So things are going good here. We have some staff moved back into the office. And we're, everybody's functioning pretty good. We've got, our building is, as everyone knows, is kind of in a bit of a flurry and it doesn't look like it's gonna let up. We're at the point now where, with the amount of homes being built, businesses are starting to knock at the door. And we're also starting to run a little lower on industrial land. So things are going really good there and everything is, like you say, sunny in, in the south here. So that's about it for me.
Well, it's fair to say.
Brian knows lots of.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Woodbury. And it's fair to say you guys are pretty bright down there. Counselor Mellon, I just, there's your segue.
I was just gonna say that, building on what the mayor has said about all the building down here, we're thinking of, we're thinking of building an airport to service all the businesses and folks that are moving to Southgate. And we look forward to discussions with the county to get them to pay for it. That's all I have.
Well, that's, it sounds like interesting discussion coming up. Thank you.
I have one more.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Woodbury.
I don't know if this is the, the appropriate time. Heather can stop me if it isn't. But I was asked to give a quick, just an update on the wrong time.
Yep, we're gonna do that. That's actually on the committee of the whole agenda at the end of the meeting.
So I'm gonna say something at some time and it'll probably be at the right time when Heather tells me. So just to keep you in the loop.
Well, well, thanks for that update of when you're gonna speak at the right time. Thank you. All right. Well, then, moving on, then I'm gonna switch over to West Gray next and Counselor Robinson.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Warden, and good morning to everyone.
I am kid free.
Somebody's getting some feedback there. I'm not sure who that's coming from. Just hang on, Counselor.
I'll proceed then. Just a couple of things happening in West Gray. I certainly want to mention, I'm extremely proud of West Gray Fire and Elmwood, Elmwood Fire on the West Gray side. They received accreditation for their water tanker shuttle. So that definitely has a positive impact for the fire departments, but also on the community. Equally as exciting, I want to note that Gray Roots has featured a very beautiful Binko Brother Thrasher from Newstat. It was built around the eighteen nineties. Check it out on the Facebook page. It's incredibly impressive. Our Durham Hospital will be hosting a virtual Boots and Bling fundraiser event. If you're interested at all, check out their Facebook page. In addition, the West Gray Municipal Office has been open. Office hours run from ten AM to four thirty PM. But if you are needing our planning department or our building department, please call ahead and schedule a meeting because those, those interactions take a bit more time. So we, we're planning those out through scheduling. And that's it for now from West Gray. Thank you, Warden.
Well, thank you, Counselor Robinson. And Counselor Hutchinson, do you have anything to add?
Well, good morning, Mr. Warden, and morning to everyone online this morning. I think the mayor's highlighted everything. I can say that I'm very pleased to see the children back to school because I have some grandchildren living with me during their renovation. So that was good to see them get out the door this week, but I think everything else has been covered by the mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you, that, Counselor Hutchinson. And I know I have a fifteen-year-old who went back this week and he's been hanging around since March. So it was nice to see him go back for that reason. Nothing else wrong with that, but just it's nice to have a change for sure. Okay, going that next then to the Town of Blue Mountains and Counselor, whoever, Mayor or Lard, whoever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. We have, everything is going well here. The number of cases, of course, the rest of Gray County is, is zero. So we are hosting an Oktoberfest next weekend. There's a couple of events actually. And the other event which precedes the Oktoberfest is the launch of our Military Heritage Exhibit. That's at the Clarksburg Legion at two o'clock. There'll be a short presentation and displays highlighting the military heritage of the Blue Mountains. And that's being organized jointly by the library and the Legion. There will be a cash bar, which will help the Legion, who of course has not been able to generate any funds over the last while. Following that, there will be an Oktoberfest meal there in support of the Marsh Street Center. The Marsh Street Center is only one of two community centers in Ontario that are funded entirely by volunteers and the local population rather than the government. And so they, of course, have had to restrict their activities as well. So that's being, we're organizing an Oktoberfest, which will be the same as our successful Lobster Fest from last month. So there will be a sit-down component in the Legion parking lot, appropriately socially-distanced according to the health unit rules that worked quite well at the Lobster Fest. And then there is a drive-through component as well, where you can just drive by the community center and volunteers will put your Oktoberfest meal in, in the trunk of your car. So all of, for all of those, you can, the Oktoberfest, you sign up on the Marsh Street Center website. And the other one is organized through the library and you can sign up through the library website. And now turned over to Counselor Potter for anything I might have missed.
Thank you, Counselor Swatter. Counselor Potter?
Thank you. Yes, things are continuing to go well in Blue Mountains. And speaking of the Marsh Street Center, the really big news is that the coffee clutch restarted this morning. So, so they are, I was actually there last night, saw the setup. There are tables and chairs in the auditorium instead of the little room downstairs. But it means that people now can get together for coffee and, and have that little social time together that was such a, almost had become an institution of its own. Marsh Street Center also has some events coming up, including a pub night with the Hard Bottle Band. Some people may be familiar with them and a few other things coming up. Our Fall Fair would have taken place this weekend and like Fall Fair is right across Gray and Bruce and, and throughout Ontario. It had to be canceled. However, through the Craigly Depot, you can actually attend a virtual display celebrating the one hundred and fifty years. This would have been the one hundred and fifty-year celebration for our Fall Fair. So if you go online on the Beaver, I'm sorry, the Blue Mountains Public Library website, go to the museum and there you can view the online exhibit. And then, as the mayor said, the Military Heritage Exhibit at the Craigly, by the Craigly Depot at the Legion will be opening on Saturday the nineteenth. So lots coming up and we're not even talking yet about the winter season, which is promising to be busy as well. So looking forward to all of it.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Counselor Potter. And leaving now Gray Highlands, I'm gonna go to my Counselor Desai to start off and then I'll finish up. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just taking a few notes here. Southgate mentioned that they wanted an airport. All I'll say is if you get an airport, be, be in Own Sound, not a Georgian Bluff. You don't want to hear about it every meeting. And then second, second one I have here, it's not so much related to Gray Highlands, but more of a kudos to county staff. As we know, there's a report coming up in the committee of the whole where we get back into council chambers. I don't think there's enough words where I can express my gratitude to staff for bringing that forward. Zoom is getting a little tiring. And I mean, I'm out on the road, so it's also getting a little cold. So I'm looking forward to getting back, back into chambers. And yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Desai. And just to finish up then from Gray Highlands' point of view is at our last council meeting, we had a request from one of our local public schools about picnic tables. So we were able to pull together, so I think around fifteen picnic tables to be present on the, of the grounds of the McPhail School in Fleaserton to allow outside education opportunities. And so that's something that maybe others throughout the county could, you know, think about. And while we had some good weather maybe coming up, but it was a request that was made and we were able to pull from our inventory to least accommodate that request. As you're probably aware, we're moving forward with our tendering of our new water tower for Markdale, which is one of those one, those one, two, three things that we're moving forward within Gray Highlands and especially Markdale itself. And also the, the moving forward of the other night at our committee of adjustment, there was a request and it was granted to increase lands for the current school location of McPhail to be able to expand that land for the new build for a new school. So those things are sort of exciting and are moving forward in the sense of the continuation of growing, Markdale, growing Gray Highlands and growing Gray County in a respectable manner. So I don't know if there's any other comments or questions from County Council. We keep moving forward in Gray County for sure. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we need a motion for all that information?
We don't, but CAO Windgrove has a couple of comments as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, there you go. Madam CAO, welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. Since this is good news and celebrations, I just wanted to take a minute and recognize some of our staff for some really, some recent really special achievements. First of all, the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, which you would know as AMCTO, has advised that our deputy clerk Tara Warder has achieved her accredited municipal professional or AMP designation. For those of you that are familiar with this, it's a tremendous amount of work. And the fact that Tara was able to do this and demonstrate the level of knowledge and competency that's required across all five subject areas while working and while having a little one at home, I think, I think is a really a wonderful achievement and really speaks to her, her dedication and, and commitment to growing her knowledge. So congratulations, Tara, on that.
Congratulations, Tara.
And then the second, and there's actually two staff that I wanted to recognize here. Some of you may have seen this. The Ontario Professional Planners Institute, OPPI, recently announced the recipients of their member service awards. And the member service awards are something that OPPI puts out to recognize the service and contribution by members back to the profession. And I was so pleased to see two names that you all know really well. One was Liz Buckton from Meford and the other was Scott, our own Scott Taylor. So, you know, kudos to them. They've both done so much to try and, you know, connect the planning profession back into the schools. Think of Scott and his Lego work and Liz with all of the work that she does on continuing education and helping the planners with their in-service learning. So we're so fortunate to have such great folks on our teams and congratulations to Liz and to Scott.
Thank you for that, Madam CAO. And maybe I'll take this opportunity to also thank you through all this new, new territory of COVID nineteen and your leadership as the CAO and, and guiding us as County Council and staff in the county. And again, thank you for everything that you have done as well. Okay. Good, good. Well, it must have been Mr. Taylor's wit that really put it over the top, right? Very good. Well, that's good. Okay, so moving forward then, we have one more motion and that was moved by Counselor Burley.
If I, if I could interrupt, it's Counselor Potter, something very important that we missed. And that is to congratulate Joan McKinley on winning the Tommy Cooper Award for Agriculture. She is from the Blue Mountains. She and her husband James are part of a longstanding family farming operation in our town. But their, their impact was well beyond our boundaries and even well beyond Gray and Bruce. So we would be remiss not to make note of that.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Potter. And you're very well right to say that their roots run real deep in the agricultural part of, of Gray County. And the, when the O'Maffra office was in Markdale there, at that time, Joan worked out of that and, you know, originated from Guelph. And certainly, I'm sure she's advised a large number of farmers and others, you know, with the advice when she was there and her long history of agriculture, along with James and their, their hard work they do in the farm and, and everything they do. They certainly are very hard workers for sure. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, so then I have an adjournment by Counselor Burley and Counselor Hutchinson with regards to the council meeting as of today. Is anybody opposed? Hearing none, that is carried.